So I'm gonna call to order the Planning Commission meeting for March 2nd, 2021.
Staff will call, roll. Commissioner Baffa?
Here.
Commissioner Waters?
Here.
Commissioner Gilmore?
Here.
Bernhardt? Is he unmuted, Dustin?
He's present.
There he goes.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear Derek now. So Commissioner Hay?
Here.
Commissioner Olson?
Here.
So that is a quorum of six members present. Margie, can you confirm that the requirements of the Kansas Open Meeting Act have been met?
Yes, I can confirm that the PACO is posted and the required notice of the meeting was provided.
That allows us to proceed with today's agenda.
Okay, so approval of the minutes from the January 19th, 2021 meeting?
Make a motion, we approve the minutes of the 2021 meeting?
Second.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second?
I think with minutes and adjournment, I think we can get by with just a voice vote. So all those in favor of approving the minutes of the January 19th meeting, please say aye.
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 Anyone not in favor? So the minutes are approved by a six to zero vote.
Okay. New business. We're moving on to application 3.1, which is Z18-6A filed by Sunset Custard DT LLC.
Think y'all be presenting this staff report and also trying to moderate in screen share. So we'll give this a go here. Give me a moment. I'll start the story. All right. So the subject property that we are dealing with today is the former MOKAs, which you can see on the aerial photo where my cursor is. That building has been demolished and has been removed as Mr. Jason Ingermanson, who is the owner of Rhine Bowl Properties, who is the ownership group that owns the tracts of land or the lots that compose the former MOKAs that is being replaced by a proposed Freddy's, which is what we're going to talk about. There's also the corner lot at Crawford and Lewis, which is the new MOKAs where Mr. Ingermanson moved his MOKAs operations virtually next door. And so what we have here is we have an area that has been rezoned fairly recently, if you remember being on the commission, to C3, Plan C3, and that rezoning took place from the former zoning, which was a mixture of C5, which is the darker red, and R1 residential. So there was a 65-foot strip of R1 residential that ran east to west, all the way from Ohio through Lewis and matched up with where my cursor shown on the map here. That, that R1 property was rezoned along with a piece of ground that was also C5, where the Popeyes is currently located. And the reason for that rezoning was to take what we had, a mixture of C5 zoning and R1 zoning, and bring it under one unified zoning district, in this case PC3. And the reason the PC3 zoning was required is because this area is part of a neighborhood center on the comprehensive plan. So we went from C5 and R1 to PC3, and that happened in April of 2018. So a lot of you will probably remember that. Along with that rezoning to PC3, they did a few things. One is it brought forth the C3 bulk regulations and land use limitations and permitted uses. And it also required that any new development have a final development plan that is reviewed by the Planning Commission. Another, another condition of that PC3 zoning was the completion of the shared access road that is on the south side of this development, and we'll get into that when we get into the site plan here in a moment. So that's the current zoning of the area and, and how we got to where we are. The applicant, Mr. Jason Ingermanson through Rhine Bowl Properties LLC, is proposing to build a new Freddy's restaurant. And the Freddy's restaurant is going to be unique in that the only dining that they're proposing will be covered outdoor dining. So there will be no indoor dining. And the reason that is unique is the C3 district limits outdoor dining to no more than 50% of the indoor dining area. And the purpose for that is the C3 district is intended to provide retail and shop experiences while limiting outdoor activities and display. So when you get into uses that have a lot of outdoor display and activities, those uses are usually reserved for a C5 zoning district and are usually prohibited in the C3 district. And so in this case, we have an application for 100% outdoor dining, which the current C3 districts or PC3 districts does not allow. So the applicant's seeking two things that you're going to be looking at and deciding on. The first thing is an amendment to the existing PC3 zoning to allow for unlimited outdoor dining or 100% outdoor dining. And the second thing you're going to be reviewing is the approval of a final development plan that's going to incorporate a site plan, landscape plan, as well as building elevations that we'll look at. So the site plan here that you're looking at is, shows a lot that is 200, or excuse me, 123 feet wide by 318 feet total deep. So it's rather a deep lot, not extremely wide. So it's a linear lot with 123 feet of frontage on Crawford. The total area for this lot is 39,322 square feet and change, or 0.9 acres basically. The site is accessed off of Crawford. And what the applicant is proposing to do is consolidate two existing curb cuts into one existing curb cut. So they're essentially removing one of the curb cuts and reducing it to a single curb cut. Now, this is important because as the applicant has been redeveloping this area, he is essentially consolidating eight curb cuts on Crawford and two curb cuts on Lewis to what will now be two curb cuts on Crawford and one curb cut on Lewis. And the one curb cut on Lewis will be the shared access road that goes all the way from Lewis all the way through to the Popeyes site, which we'll, we'll talk about in a moment. So the street access will be extremely improved from staff's point of view, reducing conflict points and controlling access better than what we've seen in the past along this particular corridor. In looking at the the utilities for the site, the site does have a number of utilities already in place that won't need to be upgraded or changed. So there is a 30-inch water line that is underneath Crawford and that is paralleled by a six-inch domestic access service line. There's also an eight-inch sanitary sewer that runs on the south side side of and for drainage, there's a 24-inch storm sewer system underneath Lewis and Crawford and it's collected at the intersection over here. You can see some of those details in the site plan where that storm water runoff is collected and then goes into the public system for drainage. The Riker addition, which this property is part of, was plotted prior to 1980 and therefore is not subject to any storm water detention requirements or special drainage studies. The building itself is oriented north to south primarily. We have a canopy, which is this dashed line that you see here in the site plan. As I zoom in a little bit, I'll try to get it a little tighter yet because it's kind of hard to make out. We have 41 feet of frontage that face Crawford and then our, our depth, we have 104 feet from the north edge of the overhanging canopy to the south edge of the building. The building is accessed through two doors that are on the west side and face the parking lot. So the parking is primarily on the west and northwest side of the property and is separated from the drive-through area by a raised curbed island area. So there's a little bit of a refuge area for pedestrians as they go from their motor vehicles and they're walking to the restaurant. The two doors that face west are for two purposes. The south door is the entrance for the employees that are going to be working inside the kitchen and providing service to the customers and patrons. The north door, which is shown on my screen here, is the restroom that is accessible from, an exterior door for people that are coming to eat and enjoy the Freddy's service and food. On the east side, you have two windows, two drive-up windows, one for paying and, and taking care of your business transaction, and then the other is the actual pickup window. And there is also an ordering station on the southwest portion or corner of the drive-through. So the drive-through looks like this, where you come in, the, the entrance, and you come around the west side of the building, and around the south side of the building, and then the east side. And the east side is where you, you pay for your food and you pick up your food, and then that directs you straight out of the exit. So you can exit directly out into Crawford or you could loop back around the parking lot and access the shared access road, which will give you direct access to Lewis. Or if you're looking to take a right turn south on Ohio, you can actually go through the Popeyes lot further to the east and take a right out on Ohio. When we look at the area of paving and building and landscaping, what we see is that the building is 3,400 square feet and that is, that amounts to about a little over eight and a half percent of the total lot. Then the paving area equates to 25,728 square feet, which is over 65% of the total lot, with the remainder 10,194 square feet being composed of the landscaping, which you'll see is the shaded area on this landscape plan. Looking at building design, we do have the applicants who will help, help us with this a little bit. But we have a situation where we have elevation drawings, but they're black and white. And we have some color renderings, but they're not the most current model that's being proposed. And so we'll have the applicant help us kind of paint the picture of what's different between the two. But I'll, I'll do my best to kind of fill in until we hear from the applicant. So here's the black and white version. I'm going to take you to the color version first, simply because I think it helps give us some context, even though it's not, not 100% the same. It's, it's going to take a moment for it to load up here.
That's a good-looking building.
Yeah, it's still, it's still waiting. Oh, there it is. All right. So this is the color rendition that, that we were given initially and since then, a different model has been selected for Salina. But I think the canopy is going to be fairly similar to what is being proposed. The difference being, I think there will be a cabinet sign on the north face, just on the north, north face, that has a Freddy's rather than a channel letter signs that you see on this particular model. And then the front of the building, about where my cursor is, the, the bottom four feet is going to be a red brick masonry on the model that's being proposed by the applicant, which is different than what we're seeing here. I think the windows are probably the same or very similar. And then there is an architectural red metal paneling on the north side above the brick, which is going to be similar to what you're seeing in this rendition here. And then the brick wainscote that will wrap around the side for, for a little bit of distance where my cursor is. And then the awnings are a little bit different on the model that we're looking at compared to the rendering that we have having the photograph here. So now I'm going to go back to the black and white and see if we can properly describe those differences or see those differences. And so here you see that the awning, it looks to be very similar to the one in the 3D rendering. There is a sign on the north face that has a cabinet for the Freddy's steak burgers, which is a little different than the channel letters that we have in the rendering. And then here's the brick wainscoting at the bottom. And that is different than the, the red architectural metal that, that is being proposed in the rendering. I think the same red metal is being proposed on the upper half that we see in the rendering. But the bottom is the primary difference where this particular model has red brick, brick masonry work. The windows, these are the walk-up windows that pedestrians will use. The vehicles will use the drive-through window on the east. Pedestrians will use the walk-up window at, on the north side, which is where the outdoor dining is located. So that's the north elevation. And to get to the south. South elevation is primarily going to consist of, of an ephesus material that is going to be a khaki color. And I don't know that there's much else to be said about that. There is going to be a mixture of what I understand to be white horizontal paint colors with, with an elevated architectural texture to it or an elevation change at the top, as well as some red coping. Very see the shaded area. I'm understanding that to be a red metal coping that's going to cap the walls. And that is probably pretty similar to what we see in the 3D renderings. Here we have of the, the east elevation. And the east elevation has the, the drive-through windows, the one where you pay, as well as the one where you pick up your food. The awnings here appear to be a red with white striping and they, they appear to be more of a slanted architectural design versus the horizontal awnings that you saw in the 3D rendering. And then as you get towards the north end, you pick up the, the wainscoting of the, of the red brick. And then you have the canopy to the north of that with the outdoor seating. And there's, there's an iron railing that creates the, the edge or the buffer between the drive-through area and the dining area. On the west elevation, you have the restroom entrance, which is the north door. And you have the employee entrance with the south door. And then you also have those same awnings that match the awnings that are on the east side above the drive-through windows. And lastly, we have the elevation drawings of the trash enclosure, which is six feet, eight inches tall. And it's a combination of brick wainscoting on the bottom four feet and seam you block with the ephesus coating on the outside to match the, the walls of the exterior of the building. For off-street parking, the
Dustin, what's ephesus?
So ephesus it is, it's an insulation product that is a finish that, it looks a lot like, like stucco. Okay, so it, it has a, a texture to it, but for the most part, it's a smooth texture. And it, it can be colored a lot of different ways. Let me see if it shows up well in the rendering. This running maybe shows a little bit better, but it, it has a, a flat surface to it. But if you look at it closely, it's going to have almost like a stucco texture to it. Okay, so I think we were at parking. So for parking, this particular property is, is a restaurant. And for restaurants, we, we require three parking spaces for every three stalls or a one parking space for every 50 square feet of your dining area. So in this case, the dining area is the larger of the two, so that's what we use. We have over 1,100 square feet of outdoor dining area, which requires 22 off-street parking spaces. The site plan that's being proposed has 24, two of which are ADA handicap accessible. So that would meet the required off-street parking and actually exceed it by two additional parking spaces. Site plans for restaurants are also required to have a loading, unloading area for supplies, such as food and materials and, and things like that, that are required in order for their service operations. And in this particular case, the applicant has provided us with a written letter on their letterhead describing that their deliveries of their supplies are going to take place on off-business hours. And so they don't have a dedicated loading, unloading zone, but there is plenty of space within the circulation of the site for that loading and loading to take place during off-business hours. Landscaping, there, this site is required to have 2,460 square feet of landscaping area. The proposed plan has a little over 2,500, so we do meet the landscape area requirements. There's also, in addition to the front yard landscaping area, there's four islands and peninsulas within the site that add additional 2,500 square feet of landscaping area. And the front yard area that is along Crawford is enhanced with four shade trees and 17 shrubs for parking lot screening. In addition to the landscaping that takes place in the front yard and throughout the site, there's also a 39-foot wide buffer towards the south between the shared access road and the south property line. And that area has already been landscaped and screened as part of the first phase of the redevelopment of this property that took place with the MOKAs development. And so if you go out there today, you'll already see a number of screening plantings and that 39-foot buffer out there today. Looking at signage, the C3 district allows for four square feet per lineal foot of building frontage. And as we saw in our, I'll go to this elevation because it's easier to see. In our elevation on a north frontage, there is is, and a wall sign that's being proposed, that's a little over 22 square feet. And so staff would ask the applicant to clarify if there's any additional plans for additional signage. There does appear to be on the landscape plan, we've got up here a sign out, it's a little slow on your end. A sign out in front, whether that's a ground sign or pole sign, we would see clarification on that. And we would also note that all signs are required to have a sign permit application. So one thing that we are required to do when we are looking at planned districts is there's a checklist of sorts that we are required to go through. And I've got that pulled up on the screen that you'll see in a moment if you don't already, because it takes a little bit. And what that looks like is there's a, a number of criteria, eight of them in all. And what I've done is I've kind of summarized what I think the, the, the plans represent and how the proposed plans meet these criteria. So the first one deals with, they allow uses and the permitted uses and conditional uses and whether or not they're permitted in the applicable zoning districts. In this case, we're dealing with the Plan C3 district, which does allow for restaurants as a permitted use. So that takes care of that. For number two, the proposed Freddy's restaurant development meets all both regulations and use limitations within the C3 district. The only exception is the outdoor dining limitation, which the applicant is requesting an exception or waiver to in order to have 100% outdoor dining. Number three, the proposed Freddy's restaurant site development plan conforms to the city's landscaping and screening requirements, providing sufficient off-street parking and has a site lighting plan that should minimize any impact on the surrounding properties and is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. And lastly, the Riker addition in this, at this location is a pre-1980 subdivision and is not part of a critical drainage area, so a drainage study is not required and no additional drainage requirements are required. Number four, the site development plan for Freddy's proposes to consolidate two existing curb cuts along Crawford Street into a single curb cut, allowing both ingress and egress. All of the interior driving aisles are designed to meet the dimensional requirements, the zoning ordinance, and should provide safe, efficient, and convenient movement of traffic within the site. Additionally, the proposed development plan completes the construction of the shared access road to the south, connecting the existing Popeyes site with the Lewis Street to the west and consolidating the existing curb cuts and completing the shared access. road located south of the building should greatly improve the property's access control and traffic station for the spot. The drive through also has thirteen stacking spaces, which exceeds the minimum of eight that the code requires. Number five, the Site Development Plan for Freddy's has pedestrian access across a parking lot as well as a curved island area as a refuge area for people that are crossing the parking lot uh and crossing the drive through area. There's also an existing sidewalk along Crawford for pedestrians. For landscaping, the site has sufficient landscaping area in the front yard as well as a rear buffer that exceeds the minimum requirement by twenty four feet as it's thirty nine feet wide. And the minimum landscaping buffer is fifteen. The site also has adequate front yard plantings with four shade trees and seventeen shrubs. And for number seven, the Development Plan for Freddy's proposes adequate screening with a six foot, eight inch tall trash enclosure that will consist of winged brick wainscoting and CMU covered stucco finish to match the design characteristics of the Freddy's Restaurant Building. And lastly, number eight, the Freddy's Restaurant proposes an outdoor dining area on the north side of the restaurant, uh, which the applicant is requesting an exception waiver for, but does not propose any outdoor storage that would require screening. So as staff goes through the punch list of items that a Plank Commercial District is required to meet, we believe that the proposed plan does meet all of all of those requirements. So on page fourteen, we have a list of the review process as well as the planning commission's alternatives. We have two actions that we need to consider. And I think what staff would recommend is that the Planning Commission approve the amendment to the PC three zoning district to allow for a hundred percent outdoor dining as being requested by the applicant. And we also would approve the or suggest and recommend approving the final development plan with a number of conditions. Um, with those conditions being, number one, the construction of the rear shared driveway be which I'll pull up here, be completed as part of this project and during this phase. That signage for this property be limited to one pole or ground sign with a maximum area of a hundred and twenty square feet. And that all landscaping, sidewalk, circulation, parking, fencing, and other improvements shown on the approved site plan that be completed prior to occupancy of the building. And number four, that the property or that the project shall be completed in substantial conformance with the approved final development plan, including all landscaping, associated sign and building elevations that are here to or hereby incorporated by reference. And lastly, a condition number five, that a building permit for this project be obtained within eighteen months of the site plan. So with that, staff will will take any questions or we can look at any of our our graphics and talk about those.
I have two questions, um, the trash pickup. Is there adequate room for trash pickup? And then uh will that be done during the day or at evening? And if it is at evening, isn't it quite noisy for the neighbors to the south?
I'm going to pull up a graphic here so we can look at it. So the location of the trash enclosure is actually in the southwest corner of the property. Um, there is sufficient room for for pickup and and drop off of it in terms of of it being accessible. In terms of the the proximity to the neighbors, we are, I'll get a measurement here. So you're looking at seventy four feet uh between the trash enclosure and the south property line with thirty nine of those feet being the the landscape buffer. I don't know when trash pickup occurs on this site. That's a good question for the applicant, um, because I do know that they have a trash service in a similar location just over here to the to the west a little further. And so knowing when that takes place could be helpful. And uh we we could certainly take that into consideration and and hear from the applicant on on when that's going to take place.
Okay, and then is the uh they're showing a um plant buffer uh just north of the uh residential area, is that in place and or is that prior to the project?
Yeah, that's currently in place. Um, I've let's see if this gives us a decent view. So this is in, this is about a year old, maybe. So the old Mokas is still here in this photograph. As you can see, uh, you can see the old building, you can see the the former curb cuts. You have a curb cut here and a curb cut here that are being removed and consolidated into one. And you also have the road that has been constructed up to this point, which is going to be finished all the way out to Popeyes. And you have the landscaping buffer uh area as well as the plantings that have been installed during the first phase of that construction when the Mokas was built. So the next phase will include the extension of the access road all the way to Popeyes and the maintenance of the existing landscape buffer that's uh that's currently in place. Here is, you can see in the photograph, the existing trash enclosure for for Mokas, which is in a in a similar area, uh, at least close proximity to where the proposed one is, the proposed one is about where the hand cursor is in this photograph. So this would be the rough rough allocation or location of the of the proposed trash enclosure.
And then, um, also, wasn't, isn't there a flooding concern on Ohio and Crawford in heavy downpours?
Well, we do, I believe Kent Johnson is on the call with us and he can speak to a little bit, what I can do just to help add context to the area, see if I can uh pull up the stormwater lines just to so that you can see what they look like in the area. There is a twenty four inch line that goes underneath Lewis and Crawford intersection here. And there's a number of inlets around the intersection, that's what these these boxes are. And so we do have a stormwater system in the area. As to how adequate or how well it performs, I I can't speak to that um, other than to mention this, that the proposed development will have uh landscaping that a lot of this previous development didn't. If you're if you recall where the old Mokas is, the Coops Pizzeria and the businesses that are to the east and the former buildings that were at the corner of Lewis and Crawford, they didn't, none of them had landscaping. And so as Mr. Inger Manson goes through and redevelops this area, he is adding uh landscaping, both in the front yard areas as well as island areas to help reduce some of the stormwater runoff. But I I'll let Kent, if he's on, respond to any drainage concerns that he might have. Can't you with us, but chance? Perhaps he isn't, he isn't with us at the moment.
I can address some of the drainage questions, Dustin. The the this site, the runoff from this site will not go to the Crawford, Ohio intersection. That storm pipeline at Lewis runs directly north and drains directly into the Smoky Hill River Cut Off Channel. And so the water from this site will go directly to the Cut Off Channel, not to the Ohio Crawford intersection.
Thank you, Dean.
And no further questions.
Any other questions from the commission?
Yes, uh, John, I have a question for Dustin or Dean. The report states that traffic will not be increased substantially. I was just wondering how that was determined.
Well, it was determined by, if I can pull up the aerial photo and essentially, it it was an assumption made that we are going from a single restaurant that was on this property before and replacing it with a single restaurant before. So it's a like and like replacement. And we've improved the access to the site as well as the circulation of the site because the size of the property has has virtually doubled because as you see, the outline of the parcel tract that was the former Mokas, we are taking that and extending it all the way to the south property line now, so increasing the area of which that that activity takes place by by twice, basically. And so uh the use itself isn't a a different or more intensive use because it was a restaurant before and it's going to be a restaurant now. And we are increasing the area and adding better site circulation and access. So that's that's how we justify that the changes or impact to the traffic in the area would be minimized.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, then can we hear from the applicant?
Yeah, hi, everybody, um, my name is Chris Hitchcock. I'm with JRI Hospitality, which is uh the representing the applicant. And our civil engineer Brett Wilkinson is also on the line. You know, uh, open, open for any questions, just as a little bit of background on this. This uh drive through Freddy's prototype will be the first trial um for uh Freddy's corporate in the country um as a as a drive through um outdoor seating concept only. Um, if you guys uh n- know, uh, JRI, we're we're based out of Salina. We're a very large Freddy's frozen custard franchisee uh corporate. Uh, we've designed this in conjunction with corporate, um, again, as a as a trial to um really essentially try to try to uh do multiple locations throughout the country. Um, and they were 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 a good franchisee. They agreed to do this with us and we're excited to do it in uh in Salina. So, um, some of the, some of the stuff on the uh elevations that you saw that kind of differ with the brick wainsco uh versus the color renderings uh match what the existing prototypes are for new prototype Freddy's Frozen Custards right now and uh what they what they did in the design, the 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 design changes, excuse me, from the uh color renderings to what the black and white renderings are were more in conjunction with uh matching what our existing prototype is uh as as well as some of the signage changes you see in the black and whites versus the color. Um, as as Dustin mentioned, the there's no color variations uh in in anything. And you know, they're 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 minor changes and uh I I can assure you that most of the changes were due to uh making it more aesthetically pleasing uh than what you even see here, so.
Is there going to be any uh uh heating underneath the awning?
Uh, you know, that is a good question. Uh, I I can't answer that. To be uh to be completely upfront with you, I kind of came in a little late on this project. It's it's been a project that Freddy's Corporate and JRI have been working on for um probably six months. Uh, but I certainly can get that answer.
Like a low wave radiant heat uh would extend your uh season quite a bit.
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Okay, any other questions for the applicant from commission? Okay, we're going to open it up to comments by interested citizens. So Dustin, do we have any citizens on?
I'm looking, I I believe everyone I see is associated with the project, either as part of the design team or as part of the commissioner's staff. But um if I am incorrect, then somebody please raise their virtual hand or wave and we'll we'll get you noticed. So, no, I don't see anybody from the public.
Okay, at this point, then, we're going to, um, yeah. So any other comments from staff or from the applicant?
I was just gonna, Dustin, if you could go back to the aerial photo and the extension of that south access road is partially a follow up to Commissioner Waters' question. The rationale behind that was to provide an alternative way to get out of the area and to get to Lewis Street instead of having every single car enter and exit the Crawford driveway. So by having that that south access road that ties back to Lewis, uh, that provides an alternate way either for property uh or customers that want to go south on Lewis or would rather enter Crawford from Lewis instead of the driveways. The other concern that dates back to the Popeyes project is if you, um, with Popeyes being a right out only, um, that leads to the consideration where people could exit Popeyes, turn on Millwood, go through the residential area to get to Lewis or Roach um to get back to Crawford. And so that that southern access road and tying that back to Popeyes is to provide an alternate way to get um to Lewis without having to drive through the residential neighborhoods.
So and Dustin, can you take, put that picture back up there?
Yeah.
The drawing, so at the top, um, northwest corner of it. So we it also looks like that there's an entrance into the Mokas parking lot also, where there's an entrance off of Crawford Street. Where's that entrance off of Crawford Street for the Mokas parking lot?
It's where my cursor is, and I'll bring up a a photo, an aerial photo here that will also help. So here's, here's where it looks today. Um, the proposed Freddy's is over here. So you have the existing one for Mokas here. Uh, this one is being closed off. This is the the curb cut that's being eliminated on this particular property. And then the east curb cut will be the one that is utilized for accessing the site.
Okay, so they can actually exit this property to the north on the Crawford Street, either from that cutout or from the Mokas cutout.
Right, because both sites will be connected. Both sites will be owned by Jason Inger Manson through Rybald Properties. And so the site plan does have interconnectivity, both with the shared access to the south. And there's also a connection point uh between the two sites that I'll I'll bring up here. So you can see that on on the the site plan as well.
All right, so I'm going to go ahead and still don't have anybody from the public, correct, Dustin?
Correct.
All right, so we're going to close the public comment portion of the hearing. And we're going to move to um commission discussion in action. So any comments? Thoughts?
So what we're exactly looking at then is that the first thing we're going to be looking at is an amendment to the PC three to go a hundred percent outdoor dining.
Correct.
That's the first uh action.
Correct.
Okay.
And the way you've structured that, Dustin, you've allowed that to be done in a single motion?
Yeah, bottom of page fourteen, I do have a number of of alternatives. Yep, bottom of page 14, I do have a number of alternatives and options for you that takes care of the action simultaneously. And so if you're looking to approve the PC3 modifications to eliminate any limitation on the percentage of outdoor dining and to also approve the final development plan, you can do that with either options one or two. And we would probably recommend number two because we do have a number of conditions that we would recommend. And so those conditions are on the bottom of page 15. So I think we would suggest alternative two or option two there. And the four or five conditions that we have at the bottom of page 15.
So if a commissioner wanted to make a motion, they could simply make a motion to adopt option two with the conditions recommended by staff. Guess that's a question for you, Dustin?
Yes, that's the way I've structured those alternatives.
So actually, you're looking at option two, which is to approve the proposed PC3 modification to eliminate any limitation on the percentage of outdoor dining allowed on this property, effectively allowing the Freddy's restaurant to have 100% outdoor dining and approve the proposed site development plan, subject to certain revisions and conditions.
Yep, that would be option two.
Correct. And those conditions would be the... Yeah, and those conditions would be the ones that are listed at the bottom of page 15.
Okay, so I'd like to use that as a motion then.
I second it.
Okay, so it has been motioned and seconded. Can we have a roll call?
On a motion to approve option two with the conditions recommended by staff, Commissioner Bappa?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilmore?
Yes.
Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries unanimously six to zero. The amendment to the Plan C3 district will go on to the city commission with your recommendation of approval. And we'll communicate with the applicants on when that will occur.
Okay, thank you. So we are now on to item...
You know, I'd like to say one thing. The landscape plan has got the English oak in it. And I'm thinking that it's not native, for one thing. And another thing, it's being overused. Now shut up now.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. We're going to move on to item 3.2, which is application PDD 81-40, file by Kyle Kipps of Call Valley Engineering on behalf of Discount Tire. So before we hear from the staff, is the applicant present?
Yes.
Okay, so let's hear from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This is an application for final development plan approval as part of the Central Mall Plan Development. And we're looking at an outlawt on the east side of South 9th Street, directly north of the Chick-fil-A restaurant. And we provided for you on page two of your report and attached to the report essentially a chronology of the outlawt development at Central Mall. The most recent plan approved prior to this was for the Chick-fil-A restaurant. And this is the first time we've gone north of the access road that comes in, often referred to as the Dillard's Access Road, although Dillard's is no longer there and open. But this is on the north side of that road. And the applicant is requesting approval of a final site development plan to allow development of a 7,488 square foot Discount Tire service store. The building will be oriented in a west-to-east fashion with the main building entrance facing west towards South 9th Street. There'll be a secondary building entrance facing south. And the tire store will have five service bays with three service-based doors that will face south towards the mall access road. And so the north and east elevations will have blank split-faced concrete walls with no window openings. I think the thing that makes this a little different than some of the other outlots, although at the time that Taco Bell and Starbucks developed, they were in the floodplain. Also, the city was comprehensively remapped in terms of new floodplain maps in 2018. Those maps still show this track to be in the 100-year floodplain with 100-year flood elevation of 1,237.60. So in a floodplain condition, any new construction must be elevated to one foot above that elevation. So our building size here is a little over one and a half acres. The building itself is only going to cover 10% of the lot. About 58% of the lot will be paved and about 31 and a half percent will be left as green space, either landscaped or open green space. We are on step two of the PDD process. The original plan for Central Mall was approved back in the 80s. And this is the final development plan coming forward for a vacant outlawt. As I noted, the building will have a main entrance that faces west towards the South 9th Street. And a secondary entrance facing south with the service base facing south towards the mall access road. There's two secondary front yards. The south and east yards are secondary yards, but 9th Street would be considered the zoning front yard. The building would be 64 feet wide, 117 feet deep. Would be set back 80 feet from South 9th Street, so it would line up with all the other buildings, Chick-fil-A, Chili's. Those locations are all subject to an 80-foot building line. There's an enclosed trash enclosure along the east side of the lot. The building facade would be split-faced concrete masonry that would be tan and gray in color. We'll ask the applicant's representative to confirm that because sometimes colors can be lost when we get color elevations emailed to us. We can, sometimes the colors can change or lose a little. So we'll confirm whether we're reporting that correctly. The exception to the split-face block would be that there'd be a large glass curtain wall on the west elevation facing 9th Street. We have determined that a minimum of 20 off-street spaces would be required for the five service bays and the retail portion of the facility. But the applicant is showing 34 paved parking stalls. And so that exceeds our minimum parking requirement by 70%. So we would like the applicant to provide staff and the commission with some additional information explaining the need for those additional parking spaces. Again, the primary access would be from the 9th Street Mall access road, but there is also internal access from the mall ring road. And delivery trucks would use that entrance. And off the access road, and there's a loading space proposed along the east side of the building. We have water, sanitary sewer gas, and electric in place in the vicinity. There is a need to extend a sanitary sewer stub to this building. And then to provide fire protection, there is a plan where the applicant's engineer would need to design and construct a public water main extension and a new fire hydrant that would serve this site. As far as drainage and stormwater runoff, the pond for the Central Mall is adequately sized for full build-out of the mall property. The question is getting the runoff there. And so this site has been designed so it would be graded for the majority of the runoff to go back to the east towards the detention pond. There will be a small portion that will drain back to the 9th Street ditch. The original plan had some runoff going to the northeast, and that is not a permanent drainage solution. So the city engineer asked the applicant's engineer to relook at the drainage plan. And they have reworked their drainage and grading plans. The Central Mall does not allow pole signs, so this would be limited to a single monument sign, no taller than eight feet out along the 9th Street frontage. And based on the width and depth of this lot, we have determined that there would need to be 11,000 square feet of front yard landscaping in the three front yards. And they have 18,000 square feet of landscaped area, so that far exceeds the minimum requirement. And they're proposing 28 tree units, which exceeds the minimum required by our ordinance. So all the way around, their green space and their planting schedule exceeds our minimum requirements. The varieties they are proposing were all taken from the city's recommended tree list and xeriscaping plant list. And I think, I don't know if we have an elevation, Dustin, but the landscaping regulations require that their trash enclosure be screened. And they are proposing screening around the trash enclosure. So your role is to look at this. We have done our best to review this plan for compliance with city ordinances and regulations and explain how it complies. And your job is to transmit your findings to the applicant, how you find this complies with the city's development standards. And you should either approve or disapprove the plan as submitted. You could approve it subject to certain revisions or conditions. Or you could recommend that the plan be resubmitted after substantial redesigns are made. After reviewing this, our recommendation is to approve the final development plan for tract 12 to allow the Discount Tire store, subject to the five conditions that we've outlined on page eight of the report. It did seem like we had Kyle Kipps here with the engineers representing Discount Tire. So I guess the two things we would ask him to comment on is the redesign of grading and drainage and also the reasoning behind having 34 parking spaces when the city's ordinances would require 20. So with that, staff would be open to any questions you have.
I just have one. On the, you talk about the trash enclosure. Now, that's also cover the... All of the used tires and junk tires and everything will be in that enclosure also?
Well, the C3 district, this district doesn't allow any outdoor storage or display of tires. So the trash enclosure is just that. If they have a trash dumpster, then it would be enclosed by a fence and have gates, where Dustin's indicating that. So it would be, the dumpster itself would be screened from view and have walls and gates. They would not be permitted to have any storage of tires or discarded tires outside the building because the C3 district does not allow for outdoor display or storage.
So what are, does the applicant have any... I mean, what are they going to do with the used tires and stuff that they take off?
The, there is internal tire storage for the used tires. It's, it is on that view, on the lower view. Tire storage would be in that small bay door on the far right of the building.
Okay, I see. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
Uh, yes. Oh, go ahead.
I was just wanting to point out, there's just a landscaper in me here. The trees on this, I'm counting 31 deciduous trees and 21 evergreens, with a total of 52 trees going on this property. I just wanted to verify that, is that something that is required? And I think that is maybe a little too many for that site.
Hey, Derek, this is Dustin. The, this site is a little bit unique in that it's part of a planned development district that has three front yards. So you have a front yard along 9th Street, which is the west frontage. And then you have two frontages for private ring roads that are part of the Central Mall Plan Development District. And that's on the south side and the east side. In addition to that, you have a landscape screening buffer between this particular property, this commercial property, and the residentially zoned properties to the north. And that's on the north side. So it is a little bit unique, you're right. And that's because it has some characteristics that aren't always seen or are fairly rare, that requires them to have landscaping literally on all four sides. And so if we were to go to an aerial photo, you were to look at Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A is in a somewhat similar situation where they have three frontages down. They don't have the fourth side where they're adjacent to residential. But if you go out there, they have quite a bit of landscaping along the frontage right on the north, along 9th Street, which is their main frontage. And they really, they really put a lot of landscaping effort into that area. And then they also have landscaping to the east along the ring road there. So that's where all that landscaping comes in. And it is unusually intensive when it comes to the plantings that are being proposed and the requirements. But it's because they have three front yards. And the one side that's not a front yard is a landscaping buffer for the residential screening.
I would like to say that, talking about the landscaping, that Japanese zelkova is a good tree, but it's not native. And I'd like to see a native tree replace those 11.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, John. Dustin, can you just give me a rough dimension from the edge of 9th Street to the center line of that entrance?
Oh, sure. Let me get a cycle in here. So we're looking at 166 feet from the 9th Street property line to the center of the entrance.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And it lines up roughly with what we have at Chick-fil-A to the south, if that helps.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Could you clarify your comment about the Japanese zelkova, Mr. Bappa?
Yes, it's a good drought-hardened tree, but it is not native. And, you know, we've already lost 50% of our native birds. And they have not adapted to the Japanese zelkova for nesting or for, nor for the bugs that might chew on a native tree. The caterpillars would then feed their offspring. You know, I've said in the past that we need a wildlife-friendly plant list instead of just a xeriscape landscape list. And not a requirement, but I would like to see a native plant in there.
Questions for the applicant? If no questions for the applicant, we're going to go... Dustin, do we have any citizens?
Okay. If no questions for the applicant, we're going to go, Dustin, do we have any citizens?
I don't see anybody outside of, uh, staff and the commission and, uh, people that are part of the project team, so I don't see anyone from the public.
Okay, so we're going to close comments from the public portion and move it into planning commission discussion and action, so any comments or thoughts? Could we give Mr. Kipps a chance to address the site drainage and the need for, for parking spaces? Yep, sorry about that. Let's go back to that.
So Discount Tire has, um, a lot of cities do not require as many parking stalls as they'd like. Um, they've, they've developed a number based on, uh, what they see actual use of their, um, developments. Um, they need generally about seven for their own employees, but then they like to have enough for customers that have left their vehicles, um, vehicles that have been completed and, uh, vehicles that are waiting to be completed. Um, one of the, the great features of this site is the fact that it is within walking distance, uh, to restaurants and other amenities. Um, and that's one of the reasons why they would like to have the parking because they, they believe that people will uh, leave their vehicles and go to those other amenities and then come back over time once their vehicles are complete. So, um, that, that lends to, uh, why they like to have more than required number of stalls. Um, in regards to drainage, I did speak with Mr. Johnson and we we added a little bit extra fill, um, in order to make sure the majority of the property was draining back to the site and back to the curb inlets. Uh, currently, the property is all draining north and east uh, with the exception of a small sliver on the west property line that goes into the west, um, the drainage channel along Ninth Street. We are, we, we reduced the drainage that was going to the Ninth Street drainage channel to make sure it was not greater than existing, so that flow rate going to that drainage channel is not increasing. And we have, we've pushed our grading generally all the way out to our property lines, so that way very little runoff is going to the adjacent properties. Um, and it will all be, uh, conveyed back onto our property and into the storm sewer system that is going to the detention basin. Uh, again, we are, we're reducing the runoff that is being conveyed to the adjacent properties north and east. We were previously, Mr. Johnson, still wanted to see that number get as small as possible. So that is why we have, we added that additional fill to, to try to push all that extra water back onto us.
Any additional questions? All right, so let's move then to discussion and action by the commission. Comments, thoughts?
I think we're ready for a motion.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah. I move that we, uh, approve, uh, the plan, uh, subject to certain revisions or conditions as stated on page eight, uh, stack recommendations one through five.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote? Commissioner Waters?
Yes.
Commissioner Bernhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Gilmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Hay?
Yes.
Commissioner Bappa?
Yes.
And Commissioner Olson?
Yes.
So that motion is approved six to zero, and so Discount Tire has an approved site plan, and just for the benefit of the commission, on a non-planned district, a, uh, the site plan would be reviewed by planning staff as part of the building permit. In this case, the planning commission has to review and approve the plan in order for Discount Tire to get a building permit, so we will communicate your approval to the representatives of Discount Tire, and then their next step would be to submit a building permit and plans. So we thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that moves us to unfinished or other business? Um, we are still on the one, once-a-month meeting schedule. Um, there was discussion last night at the city commission level about, um, the possibility of moving to in-person meetings, and we're going to follow the lead of the city commission, although each, each board can, can do what works for them. We will check on the protocols and availabilities of room one oh seven, but our next scheduled planning commission meeting is April the sixth. And we have, uh, five applications filed for consideration at that meeting. Um, the largest two, uh, being a, uh, application for a planned development district with the site development plan for a new Sling County jail um, to be located in the vicinity of North Front Street and East Pacific. And then, uh, we have an application filed, um, to clean up some zoning boundaries related to the Tony's Pizza campus, uh, out on Shilling Road and Centennial. And then we have some, uh, smaller applications. Um, we're not sure exactly of the origins, but when the Stutzman's, uh, uh, garden center, seasonal garden center was approved by the planning commission, they, uh, limited to garden plants and flowers only, and they would like to add fruits and vegetables to their, um, to their inventory and make those available, and so there, they have, the original conditions and limitations on their operation have to be considered by the planning commission, so that, that will come back, um, to you. So we'll have a total of five items on your agenda for April sixth. But we're going to maintain our once-a-month meeting schedules for the foreseeable future, and if anything changes on Zoom meetings, we will let you know. Okay. And then Dustin, do we have anybody in public forum?
We do not.
Okay, so public forum is closed.
I have a question, uh, for staff. Uh, what's going to go at the, uh, Labor Building, the old Labor Building site?
You want to field that one, Dustin?
Um, is that, that's the Scooters, right? Scooters Coffee?
Scooters Coffee. It's a drive-through coffee facility. And so, um, they are, they have purchased the property, they have obtained a demolition permit and cleared the site, and the, the plan is to put a Scooters Coffee there that would be primarily a drive-through facility. The property is already zoned for a, uh, a drive-through, uh, coffee business there, so it's just a matter of them getting a demolition permit and a building permit. Wasn't the demolition already taking place? Yes, the building is gone and the hole's getting filled in, and there's, there's still a lot of scrap materials on the site, but the the demolition permit's been issued and the building came down fairly quickly. Okay. Yes.
Yep. I move we adjourn.
Okay. Seconded. And we don't need a roll call and adjourning, so all those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Our adjourn.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Thank you.